Let's pray. Most kind gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you once again, God, we thank you for all the many blessings of life, Lord. We ask that you'll be with those that's lost loved ones this past week, Lord. Those that are gathered right now, God, let us pray that you'll be with them. God, continue to be with the deputy, or Captain Worley, Lord. God, keep pouring out your mercy upon him. I pray, God, that you just continue to pour your mercy out upon this country. God, that you bless us as only you could. Lord, bless this county and each and every one of these commissioners as they get ready to take on the business at hand. For it in your son, Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Join me in the prayer. I pray in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ro call.
Keith Parker.
Here.
Shane Bowman. Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Mosh Davis.
Yeah.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Okay, first order of business is to elect a new chair. I'll take nominations for that.
I'll elect Greg Brooks.
Okay.
And I do that knowing that I'm not in this district, but also I'm the chairman today. The chairman requested nomination for Greg.
Okay, nomination for Greg Brooks. We'll take a roll call vote on it.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Next is approval of Mr. Craig.
Question to Greg.
Yes.
Three seconds.
In discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Next is approval of Mr. Craig.
Question to Greg.
Yes.
Three seconds.
In discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes. Next is approval of Mr. Craig.
Question to Greg.
Yes.
Three seconds.
In discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes. Next is budget amendments.
Got another going on.
Next is approval notice, we got one from Iron Hood.
It's a reappointment.
Okay. In discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Next is budget amendments, and we've got several, so what I like to do is just, if anybody's got any questions, I'm gonna ask it. If anybody wants a copy, or anybody in the office, everybody right here, speed it up. If anybody got any discussion on any budget amendments?
Can we get both funds?
Where would they just go?
Well, we got...
This is 101 here.
101 and then 122.
And 122.
Yeah, I know, the number seven, what? Oh, it is grants over by receipt?
Yes, sir. And this will be understood, it's full from the items in which they've sold, they've sold sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty more, so there's more than enough.
Okay.
This is just to cover some extrication equipment that they had a grant for, but there wasn't enough that they received, so that's for additional funds for that there.
What is it, four thousand two hundred and sixty?
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Well, I was only gonna get a motion. I got, I was long as in, I'm ready to get those again. Both are approved already.
Second.
That roll call.
Now, Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes. School board has no budget amendments, so number six is boat ramp at Campbell Cove from August maybe. I think I mentioned it.
I thought y'all had it. There's no other button. Sorry. Yes, no, I have not spoken with Roy Jean anymore. We did speak right after the meeting. I have contacted Jennifer Innis at TDEC. This will require an approval. It's a five hundred dollar fee to get that permit, and then the county would be the one that would purchase the permit, and whoever would be doing the work in this case. If the road department chooses to do the work, to list a detailed summary of everything that would transpire. I know I did talk to Roy Jean about the possibility of whatever was extricated out from that to be held at the site where the new downtown courthouse is gonna be at. And that way, I believe everybody here knows that there's not a lot of good top soil or top ground, and that way we could at least be able to use it back and hopefully cut little costs whenever that finishing of that project comes on. But as far as actually hearing from the road superintendent that they would do it, no, I have not. I have got those steps in place with TDEC for what needs to be done, so if he says that he can, I'll go ahead and start that five hundred dollar for the paperwork to get that permit done, and we'll move on from there.
I have a question. I'm Tom Brown, I'm the president of the Campbell Cove Lake Property Owners Association. We just happen to have several people here tonight, because we don't know what this issue is, and we don't know where it came from. Sounds like it might be a good idea, we'd just like to learn more about it. Is this to remove...
I was the one that had this put on the agenda last meeting, because I had quite a few phone calls about the boat ramp. People, they couldn't use it.
Oh, to remove?
Yeah, to remove, to remove that to, so they could put a boat in, so it could use.
Okay.
That's the worst thing, that's the worst thing now you're telling me. People that had called me, and several other people that had called, you know, people at Fishes?
Right.
Called several other guys at Fishes, won't know what the deal was, and so I told them all I could do was put it on the agenda, and we, that the last time it was brought up, it was a lot, what was it, probably about two hundred and...
Two hundred plus thousand dollars.
Two hundred plus thousand dollars, but to get this company to do it, and to, you know, to dispose of it.
So Robbie, what's the five hundred dollars?
So there is an application fee that has to take place, because you're dealing with a public drinking water.
Right.
And so TDEC has to send out, and you have to apply for the permit. Part of that permitting is, is you have to list all that, you have proper silting fencing, and then there's a whole detail that whoever does the extrication work will have to list, so if it's gonna be used with a front end lower, a track hole, dredging, and they have to, it's only permitted for the amount of cubic yards that is estimated to be removed. So it is a lengthy process with the permitting itself, but if the road department is willing to take that on through our interlocal agreement that we have, we can work with them, and it wouldn't be the two hundred plus thousand dollars to see it done whenever it bid out the last time.
Okay.
Do I need to put this on next month, or just to you?
Yes, if you, I mean, if you don't care to put it in the placeholder, I mean, I don't know how long that permitting is gonna take place through TDEC, and if you've ever had the choice of working with TDEC, it'd be very nice.
Next is a location for the shed for the silver mortar conservation. I think Danny went, did you go up there, Dave?
Yes.
Y'all were on the spot.
I think we were on the spot, but they chose.
I don't think we need to vote on it.
They would just need, yes, so they would just need, because since they're going to actually be affixing it...
To the property.
To the property, yes, we would just need for them to have that authorization to be able to do so. And it's an approximate twenty to sixty building that will be on the back corner, if you would, kind of the third base line of the old Showmarn Field is where it's going to be at. John Hoyt did ask, as far as events for it to be used at, it was discussed, as Danny can verify, whenever the fair is taking place, that they would remove all their equipment, so there would be extra spot for vendors to be used. John Hoyt asked about the Fourth of July. I'm sure they would not have a problem with that, but that event would not be talked about at that time. But it would be, you know, it'd be a benefit for the events that do go on out there to be able to have some more drive and in the shade, whenever those events will take place.
Any more motion? I'd like to vote.
Second.
More discussion?
Second.
Oh. Roll call.
You can't hear, Pierre.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Next is SRO hire share fraud.
We've been through for two new SRO positions, the state, just like earlier, SRO, the state would give us seventy-five thousand per officer, and it'd be just like the other SRO, it's a reimbursement, we have to spend the money, and they reimburse us up to seventy-five thousand dollars. And if we don't spend that seventy-five thousand dollars, we have to return it. They do send us a check for seventy-five thou, or that'll be six hundred thousand, but if we don't spend it, we have to return it. So I just need approval for the two positions.
Got a motion, my mosh, second, last, same discussion on SRO?
I just have a question about where they're going.
One is for Pila, which is a folk embedded learning academy, and the other is for the alternative school.
I've got one question, it's really not about the SRO necessarily, but this is real quick, I've just had this on my brain, and we just kinda wanted to, is it ever discussed through your different agencies that you deal with and get grants from, and this and that, about metal detectors?
It's been discussed, and, do you want my opinion?
Yeah.
It's gonna be very costly, because it's not just metal detector, they've got metal detector.
Yeah.
You've got to have people that mount them.
Yeah.
And if you've got fifty kids coming in at the same time, one magnetometer, you've got forty-nine kids standing out in the weather. It's, I mean, you're gonna have to have four or five, and do you want the teachers doing it, and what happens if the teacher runs into a gun?
Well, yeah.
Have you before that, didn't, wasn't there one point in time that there was a grant?
Yes.
Wasn't there that he was approved for, right?
That was a core security grant.
Okay.
For the...
For this, oh, well, I was thinking there was something that...
I think the schools did.
The schools did, or something, and maybe there was something that they...
They received some, they do have them, but it is an operating problem.
I know it's expensive and costly, but I think it might be something to look into, get in there.
Well, my theory has always been, if the gun don't get in there, you've got a whole lot better chance of people getting killed, not getting killed.
Right.
And, and nothing against the SROs at all. you know, a bunch is killed before that SRO even knows what's going on.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of show and tale, more than it is truly prevention. Prevention is making sure that gun don't get through that door, and there's nothing to stop it. When my grandson was teaching this pice deer, he wore a bat, you know, he said, you know, Nana, he said, it's, it blows me away the thing, that I could've walked through that door with a pistol, and nobody would've ever knew it.
But there are, there are preventative measures, not just the SRO on the ground. There's, there's, all doors are supposed to be locked at all times.
But it don't stop that gun from coming through, right?
I get it, but they're supposed to lay eyes on them before they open that door, make sure who it is.
Yeah.
And if they don't stop at the office, then they need to...
But every morning when all the kids are coming through, that's when the chaos kinda is going on, and I get that. It wouldn't be simple, I'm not saying it would be, but it's just, I don't know, I mean, it's just, to me, the only preventative measure is for that gun not to get in the school. And I get it, they can still shoot through windows, harm can always be done, but you can't prevent that, no matter who you are, no matter how good you are, no matter what. But if it don't get in that building, there's a less chance of a lot less harm. And, you know, and, and to me, it just don't seem like that, you know, that SROs are the answer to all of it, I mean, you know, I'm not not to them.
I don't think it's the answer to all, I think it's just to help deter.
Yeah, it isn't a deterrent, it's more show and tale, and it does help. Don't get me wrong.
I think the biggest deterrent, and where the rest all starts, is at home.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Because I mean, that's usually on the school bus, get before they get...
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, but anyway, I just, I think that, you know, it would be...
Yes, but if we allow, we hire two.
And then you'll hire in like two, two particularly.
Yeah, we always hire best, put our season officers in stores.
Yeah, because they have training certainly.
You haven't voted, but thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I'm voting for it, I just, I just had that question.
More discussion on SRO? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Next is ADA compliance, Kristy Harden?
We are gonna table this, unfortunately, the death that occurred was in one of the families that was gonna be presumed, so they asked to be placed in a later date, so we'll do that later.
The October meeting is right there from you.
We'll talk about it, make sure it's okay with them.
Next is Highway four eleven south, that's mine. I think it's been two years now, that right way, with TDOT, and nothing's getting done, the roads are getting worse, you know, more trees are falling every time it storms, there's blind spots, I believe, about any of the deputies tell you how many, Jamie Lewis, he's here, how many accidents on four eleven south, and it's just getting worse, and between the blind spots, the right of way, they're not cleaned up, I mean, there's probably seventy dead trees, but anyway, I don't know what else to do, I mean, maybe Jackie can call and get the highest level person, TDOT can, to meet with us.
I'll send you the information.
Lucky on that one, Greg.
I started with...
Well, tell them they wanna meet with them, and maybe with Dan Howell, and, you know, this is two years, and in my opinion, it's been discussed for two years, and I hope they're gonna do something, but from tonight on, if, you know, anything happens to anybody because of their negligence...
If you want to, I'll give you their...
Get what you can, but I think from tonight on, you know, anything happens by their negligence, I think they should assume total responsibility, they've been asked for two years, and, but I'm, I'll try to get a hold of somebody rest this week, and...
I have all their contact information, and I've talked to them, so AT&amp;T says that TDOT's taking it over, TDOT's saying they're getting on it, and so...
Well, our legislators are gonna have to, TDOT is the most inconsiderate bunch of people I ever talked to in my life.
They're third in the state...
Yeah.
Behind the TWRA?
Yeah.
And DCE?
Yeah.
They're the third worst, waste of taxpayer money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
TDOC is really close. TDOC.
All right, we'll say they tied at the third.
I mean, they're third.
So I'm not gonna bring it down. I was gonna give you it though.
Well, they need a lot more employees.
So they can stand up, you know, re-upstate, they can do all that, so...
So you want me to try to contact them again, is that what you're...
Yeah, and I will too, we just need to get a meeting with the road committee, or the whole commission, actually, and, I mean, somebody's might do something. If they can spend, you know, Polk County per capita sends more sales tax than Nashville than any county in state Tennessee. I mean, obviously, they don't spend the most sales, or send the most sales, but per capita, and they can't spend fifty thousand dollars to make it passable, say, for a school bus, and you go to Chattanooga, and they're spending multi-millions on projects for new clover lease, or whatever, just to make it more convenient, somebody to get into the Starbucks. Yeah. You know, they're gonna have to spend a bigger hundred thousand more for public safety, it's, I mean, it's literally, when it rains, it's like going through a tunnel, the trees are like in the road, and you can see the exact shape of a eighteen wheeler trailer, you know, within the trees, where they just barely get under.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's crazy, and it's been going on for two years, so...
Maybe I can get with the guy with TDOT, maybe set up a meeting with you guys or something?
That's fine, you let me know, and I'll make sure everybody can be there, but something, I don't know what else to do. It's been going on for two years now.
They did say there's only like four lines that's using that line all the way down, everybody else just went to fiber optic or whatever.
But still, they...
But they're gonna try, they said, and this is what they told me, within the next year, those four lines would have to go to, and those lines will be no good anymore, and they would have to take them down, so...
But, you know, the trees need to trend down.
Right.
For sure, we can't wait another year, it's been two years now, so ain't waiting.
Yeah.
And I spoke my piece about four eleven south, we'll try to get a meeting set up. Next is East Polk Fire Department Shelter Discussion, that's my mosh. Now, I talked to Marty about this, he wanted to put this back on the agenda again, and so he, he wanted to do some explaining or some talking about the situation, but, you know, we did vote to maintain that a shelter up there, we did vote that last meeting, so Marty, I'll let you explain what you wanted to talk about, Marty.
Thank you, sir, I'm Marty Center Fitz, Chief of Copper Basin Fire Department. First, what we wanna do is recommit the fact that we are here for the county. Our Copper Basin members are members of this county, they believe in it, and we absolutely support public safety in all of its, all of its areas. Simply put, we support, we have supported for years, the idea of a shelter being at the Duck Town Fire Station. It's in a good location, we know that's a county building, we know it was built to be a shelter. The main room, the main fire hall, if you would, has air conditioning, heating, a refrigerator, it has access to both bathrooms. It's the only right place to have a shelter in Duck Town, and we wanna be on record saying in no way do we have a problem with the shelter being there. For the last three and a half years, we have provided the shelter staffing for that, and what we've recognized over last year, in the winter months, which tends to get busy for the shelter, we recognize that we think it can be done better. It's not that we're opposed to a shelter, we're standing here firm to say it can be done better, and we're asking for the county's support to do it though. Now, with that being said, you know, I, as a fire chief, I report to a board, and when a board starts taking up official matters, then they have to make sure things are posted and noticed properly. And when we started talking about the shelter, the first thing my board did, as they should, is they made sure that the whole conversation of shelter is within our scope and practice of a five oh one C three fire department. So we went back, we looked at the charter, okay, who's responsible for sheltering, and it became apparent that sheltering is a county function, we support the county in that. And so we don't wanna make any decisions or any agreements without going through the county first, because we recognize that's not our place. And so what we did after a full board discussion, is we sent a letter back in July to the county executive, asking to simply meet with the county executive to discuss how we can do things better. That's the letter that everybody's talking about. Now, somehow things got off track, and it started being tried in the, in the internet, on Facebook, and the rumors were far crazier than anything that was ever discussed. But what we're asking simply is to meet with the county executive and talk about how we can do it better than we're doing it now. We recognize some shortfalls, and we wanna do it better.
Have you to request get on the agenda last month to no longer use it for a shelter?
That was put on the, we weren't aware of it until after the fact. The letter, the final statement of the letter is, we look forward to further discussion with you, we wanna meet, we wanna talk about it.
It was on the agenda last month somehow for us to be aware, you know, to no longer use it as a shelter, have it get on the agenda?
Well, it was on there, I think, Robbie, when Robbie got that letter, it was on there not to, to maintain it as a shelter, and to give Robbie, I think, a little bit of motivation off, to give Robbie permission to go ahead and pick somebody, if the fire department deemed they wasn't qualified to run it, that Robbie could pick, get somebody to, to run the shelter when it was needed. That's what the meeting was about, it wasn't to shut, that the shelter had been shut down, it was several factors, that we were trying to get somebody to maintain it when it was needed.
The only thing that was on the agenda that said Copper Basin letter was a...
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we didn't recognize Copper Basin letter being Copper Basin Fire Department. What we recognized, as we looked into it, is the American Red Cross provides shelter services, and would be happy to provide shelter services up in Duck Town, but in order to get into an agreement with the Red Cross, only the county executive can do that, only the county executive can sign agreements on behalf of the county. And so the board would like to have a discussion with the county executive to talk about that. There is a lot of training that goes into sheltering, and Red Cross would be happy to speak on that, that there's, you know, there's shelter training, shelter staff training, there's shelter manager training, there's ADA training that goes into running a shelter, there's safety security training that deals with issues like, what do you do if somebody comes to a shelter, but they self-report that they're, they're a child, a convicted child predator, but they want a place to shelter, how do you handle that? There's a lot of issues, and so as our board talked about it, they realized, number one, we need more training, we need to make sure we do it right and we don't get sued. Number two, when the weather is bad and we're opening a shelter, that's exactly when we get the busiest as a fire department. And we've had a situation in the past where we're staffing a shelter, but then a structure fire comes in, well, do we go to the structure fire, or do we stay behind? And then we had one instance, one time in three and a half years, and it happened a few months back, where we had a bad thunder cell pop up in the day, it was one of those quick forming storms. Executive Hatcher notified us at about four fifteen that we needed to open a shelter at six, and when I reached out to my members, I didn't have anybody to staff it. And so what we offered is, look, if someone needs a shelter, one of our people will take off work to come man it, but that started the discussion that, you know, should we as a fire department be trying to recruit shelter staff people as part of our fire That's the letter that everybody's talking about. Now somehow things got off track and it started being tried in the, uh, in the internet, on Facebook, and the rumors were far crazier than anything that was ever discussed. But what we're asking simply is to meet with the county executive and talk about how we can do it better than we're doing it now. We recognize some shortfalls and we want to do it better.
Have you to request get on the agenda last month to no longer use it for a shelter?
That was put on the, we weren't aware of it until after the fact. The letter, uh, the, the final statement of the letter is we look forward to further discussion with you. We want to meet. We want to talk about it.
It was on the agenda last month somehow for us to be aware of it, you know, to no longer use it as a shelter? Have it not get on the agenda?
Well, it was on there, I think, Robbie. When Robbie got that letter, it was on there not to, to, to maintain it as a shelter and to give Robbie, I think it was a motivation off to give Robbie permission to go ahead and pick somebody. If the fire department deemed they wasn't qualified to run it, that Robbie could pick, get somebody to, to run the shelter when it was needed. That's what the meeting was about. It wasn't the shelter, that the shelter had been shut down. There was several factors that was trying to get somebody to maintain it when it was needed.
The only thing that was on the agenda that said Copper Basin letter wasn't?
And unfortunately, we didn't recognize Copper Basin letter being Copper Basin Fire Department. What we recognize as we've looked into it is the American Red Cross provides shelter services and would be happy to provide shelter services up in Duck Town. But in order to get into an agreement with the Red Cross, only the county executive can do that. Only the county executive can sign agreements on behalf of the county. And so the board would like to have a discussion with the county executive to talk about that. Uh, there is a lot of training that goes into sheltering and, uh, Red Cross would be happy to speak on that. But there's, there's, um, you know, there's shelter training, shelter staff training, there's shelter manager training, there's ADA training that goes into running a shelter. There's safety, security training that deals with issues like, what do you do if somebody comes to a shelter but they self-report that they're, they're a child, a convicted child predator, but they want a place to shelter? How do you handle that? There's a lot of issues and so as our board talked about it, they realized, number one, we need more training. We need to make sure we do it right and we don't get sued. Number two, when the weather is bad and we're opening a shelter, that's exactly when we get the busiest as a fire department. And we've had a situation in the past where we're staffing a shelter, but then a structure fire comes in. Well, do we go to the structure fire or do we stay behind? And then we had one instance, one time in three and a half years, and it happened a few months back, where we had a bad thunder cell pop up in the day. It was one of those quick forming storms. Uh, Executive Hatcher notified us at about four fifteen that we needed to open a shelter at six. And when I reached out to my members, I didn't have anybody to staff it. And so what we offered is, look, if, if someone needs a shelter, one of our people will take off work to come man it. But that started the discussion that, you know, should we as a fire department be trying to recruit shelter staff people as part of our fire department? Well, that's not really in our charter. So we think the right answer is go through the Red Cross, let them be the experts that they are in the field and then we support the county and we support the Red Cross in making sure this happens. But at the end of the day, this is really just a matter of sitting down, having a discussion and coming up with solutions to move forward. But we absolutely support sheltering. It has to happen and it's needed and, uh, and we would just like to talk about how we can do it even better.
I've, I've got just a couple of quick points and I, I remember the letter, I don't have to hear it. But that letter stated that that was outside y'all's purview as a fire department?
Yes.
Okay, and I understand that. And also made some other reg, or that may have been on Facebook, made some other recommendations that come from your department on your page. But a lot of what you're talking about, this shelter is for short term. Red Cross usually comes in for longer.
Longer.
We're not talking about courts and some of the things you just mentioned. We're talking about a place to go and to save short term.
Short term.
After that, Red Cross steps in. Uh, and what the motion was made by Greg Brooks, uh, last month was to, for Robbie to appoint somebody to go up there and run the shelter part when the shelter's open. And there's nothing I've heard you speak about here that has anything to do with that motion. You're saying that you don't want him to appoint somebody to come up there and, and run the shelter?
No, we absolutely do.
Okay, but we're, then there should be no issue. He's got care of.
Exactly. The issue was that it was somehow portrayed that the Copper Basin Fire Department was against sheltering and I'm here to just speak and say that we fully support it.
I do agree, it's probably the way the letter was written, because when I read the letter, it's exactly what it sounded like. I mean, just reading the letter itself, not taking into account y'all met this and that discussed, just reading the letter, it sounded like it was outside y'all's purview. You didn't want to do it. You, you know, you might have to be at a fire, so you couldn't be at both places. Therefore, you wanted us to do what we done and give the county executive the right to appoint somebody. I, I can see very well how somebody took parts of that letter and made that assumption.
No, sir, and that's why I'm here tonight to be very clear about where we're standing.
And whenever I received the letter, I had received two phone calls prior that week to the shelter shutting down. And the very first one, I was like, why would there be a shelter shutting down? So I'd already gotten calls trying to outrun the rumor mill that was starting before I even got the letter. So then whenever I received the letter, I was actually reading it as I got my second phone call. And I told this person who calls the office pre-regularly, or they message me privately whenever there's something going on, this person, particularly on the east side. And I told him, I said, I just received the letter. I said, so I can say now that I know what you all are talking about because up until then, I didn't have a clue. Since I got the letter, I've received more calls in, in the office. And so I'd asked the county legislative body to help me because is there somebody, especially commissioners on the east side of the county, is there somebody you can think of? And myself and, um, I know Greg Barker's talked about this and different ones, you know, trying to find somebody because for me personally to be able to travel forty-five minutes up to the east side to be able to open it in the event of a storm, whereas whenever this one has opened here in the past, our department, which there's some of them that's sitting here right now, will tell you, there's always somebody that says, hey, I've got the courthouse took care of and so we don't have to worry about it on the west side. And it was my understanding that it was the east side was covered. Talking about opening up this shelter, talking about, that's like when it's opened up as a warming shelter. It was never a problem. And that's something I did not approve. But that was done. But then all of a sudden, whenever I have residents that are called and worried and concerned and then to find out to get this letter, yes, it said as such, running an emergency shelter is outside of the scope. So I took that as you all didn't want to do it because you're busy whenever you have things going on. And I asked this legislative body to help me to make that decision because it's not fair. It's not fair for those residents not to have somewhere to go and to have somebody that will take care of it. Whereas here at the courthouse, it is, it's took care of. Every one of us know right now, there's one man that will come in a moment's notice.
Hey Robbie, I think the letter, while it said it's outside of purview, it said we still continue to support it. So we acknowledge that it wasn't a direct mission statement, but we still did it, we'll still do it. It's just doing it better with, with equipment. Like I, I was there when the hurricane came through. I was there sixteen hours. And after it turned, I continued to stay there for four or five more hours. So I think we have a history of staffing it without complaint. But the fact to note that it wasn't on a mission shouldn't be perceived in, uh, what I see to be a negative light. It's just factual.
And then there was, there was another time whenever it was supposed to been open, I had a resident contact me as they FaceTimed me and there was nobody there at that station. And it was listed as it was open. And then I found out that, yeah, it was open, but nobody was there. And I, I'm just saying, there's West Polk volunteer firefighters here, that whenever it goes on and when, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'll speak. When the EOC's operated, they take over, they take control, the emergency shelters go into place and then once it's shut down, we shut the shelter down and everybody dismisses and goes home.
Well, as, as the letter is trying to get to is, we've been open for three and a half years and for three and a half years, we've been running the shelter. Those people on, I've not one time had anybody talk to me about what the county policy is for shelters. We figured it out. You mentioned about the cold weather shelter. I'm glad you brought that up. See, we get put in a spot. I get called by a, I guess they're a commissioner, a leader of, uh, Copper Hill, or the commissioner or city council, I don't know. They called during a freezing situation and say, we've got a person that needs a cold weather shelter. They're gonna freeze today. Can you open it up? So what do we answer? Well, of course, if there's a citizen in need, we're gonna open it up. And I spent the night sleeping on the floor that night with that homeless man. Now later, when you found out about it, your statement was, well, I didn't order the shelter to be open. Well, no, but Copper Basin City, or Copper Hill City, uh, council member called me and said he needed a shelter. So by God, we open the shelter. But that's what brings the discussion, the whole thing we're asking for. Look, I will say right here, if the letter was written poorly, I'll take a hundred percent ownership of that. This isn't about a back and forth. I will take ownership. But what I'm saying is we want to have a discussion so we can do it right in the future. That's what we're requesting. It's just a discussion so that we can do it right in the future. Because we don't want to leave people without coverage. If they call whether it's cold weather and I, I remember when I told you I had opened it for cold weather and you corrected me that, well, that hadn't been ordered. I didn't know you weren't supposed to open it if somebody needed shelter. So it's obvious there's a gap in our communication. So what I'm asking tonight is simply to meet with you, Robbie, as the county executive. Let our board sit down and let us talk through this so that we understand what the expectations are, what we're supposed to do, what we're not supposed to do, and that we can make sure we're doing the right things for the public. Copper Basin's been in existence for three and a half years. We haven't missed a single call. We respond. I've got people that go out of their way. These people are working hard every day and they've not turned down a mission yet. But we need to understand that within the scope of what we're supposed to be doing. There's an assumption that we know. Now, my brothers over at West Polk, they've got an advantage. They've been here for literally decades plus. They've got institutional knowledge of what's supposed to be happening. I can tell you those on our side up on, up mountain, we restarted the fire department three and a half years ago. People assume we know stuff and I'm, I'm just here saying we don't and we want to know. So we'd like to meet with you, let you meet and sit down, talk to the board and let's work through all of it. That's as simple as I can make it.
We got it. We're along the agenda, Robbie, you don't get the chairman of the E and T committee.
I'd like to make one public comment before we move off of this. And I, I work with the fire department guys a lot, but I am not part of the fire department on purpose. I do not want my fire department running an emergency shelter. I do not want them involved in running things that are not fire related. We don't have enough of them. They need to stay focused on fire prevention and fire protection. Everything you're talking about here tonight is a symptom of a larger issue, which is a comprehensive emergency plan. We're supposed to have an emergency management agency in this county. Who is that person? That's the person who is supposed to be developing emergency plans exactly like this. That because he doesn't have the resources or the authority to do the things that you're asking him to do and I, as a citizen, don't want him doing those things because it takes him away from his primary mission. My suggestion is after we talk to our county emergency manager is that we seriously look at implementing a, a, uh, community emergency response team program, which most other counties in Tennessee have called CERT, very popular FEMA-administered, a little bit of funded program. But this helps take people like me, who are too old to be a firefighter, but I still can do things and I got a whole bunch of other people in my community that can do things too. We just can't fight fires anymore. Gives us some training, gives us some structure on how to respond to these things. So that's my suggestion is, hey, let's seriously consider looking at CERT, C E R T. Robbie would have to appoint somebody, uh, but we gotta start somewhere. We can't just keep beating up on the fire department because they're not doing something. And I'm gonna tell you right now, that is not in their charter to run an emergency center. I want him fighting fires. So please lay off the fire department and let's fix the plan at higher level.
I'll take what I, I agree with you, sir. They should be fighting fires. It was in their letter that they can't be doing the, the service there while they have calls out. Find work that they have out there, doesn't it? Let me finish.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is have Robbie meet with everybody, just like we just said. But until that time, the motion of this board stands. Robbie appoints somebody to run that center when there's an emergency until y'all get this all worked out.
That's great, but we need a bigger plan.
We, we've done, said what we want to do. I don't know, all this talk has nothing to do with the fact we gave you the authority to appoint somebody to run that and they have that full authority.
Has that been done?
From this commission.
Has that been done?
I don't know if you pointed anybody yet.
Okay, then we don't have a solution yet.
Yes, we do. He's gonna appoint somebody.
We don't have a person identified, so you don't want to keep beating up on the fire department.
I'm not beating up on the fire department.
Well, that's what this whole conversation seems like.
Like you said.
Well, I think it started because I think there's some poor communication on both sides. And so I think initially, that's how it got started because he felt like he was misunderstood. Which probably could have been solved by a phone call.
Hey, we all miscommunicate every day.
Then here we are. So we were, it was brought to our attention. He's in the process of fixing it.
Let's build a county plan, not a fire department plan, to run and staff an emergency center for shelters.
Like I said, Fire, uh, Red Cross comes in after the general.
Red Cross is gonna come in too late and too big. We need something local, immediate.
You know that from being around Red Cross here because they do a pretty good job down here.
But you, your whole body already said that is above their, uh, what we're talking about is something that can happen immediately. We need people who are living in the community, who can respond immediately, but I don't want that being my firefighters. I, they're, they're too precious of a resource, uh, to do running a shelter. They don't have enough of.
I understand that. Like I said, we took care of that part.
So you're gonna get on looking for someone, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we got that took care of.
Judge Thompson, statewide data collection for juvenile court.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, Chairman. Um, permission approach to give you all the new law? I have it printed out.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'll just start here and let y'all pass it around. Thank you. So y'all know what I'm, uh, what I'm talking about with this new law that just, uh, just passed not too long ago. So basically what, uh, what Nashville has done is, uh, they've decided that they want to track everything that the juvenile court does. And they've created a separate data collection. Um, is there enough to go around? Let's see here. There should be one more. I gave nine. Okay, good, good. Um, so, uh, they've, they've decided that they want to track everything that goes, uh, through juvenile court. And, um, I've, uh, underlined on the second page, everything that has to be entered. Um, and the person that's entering it has to understand what a judicial diversion is, what an adjudication is, what an unruly case is, what a delinquent case is. And so, um, I, there's two positions in the juvenile, um, juvenile budget, the YSO, the youth service officer and probation officer. And, um, they're, they're both paid at the, uh, county, uh, the regular county employee level. However, the YSO gets a grant from Nashville of ninety-five hundred dollars a year. So she's at a one point two percent basis is what she is. So it's about, uh, and if I'm misspeaking, if I'm, um, my understanding is it's about thirty-five, uh, thirty-five and change a year. And then the other person is an entry level, an entry level position. Well, she tried and I tried to, uh, to get this person trained, um, at that, um, entry level position with the high school diploma, which is your normal county employee, and they were not able to understand this information because they did not have the experience. So the YSO, in order to be compliant, there is a, there's a report that is sent to Nashville or that notifies me if it is, anything is entered wrong. When that other person was entering that information, they didn't understand it because they didn't have the training. The YSO, she has a training, she does thirty hours a year of training for her position. So she, and she's been in, um, her experience, she's been here since two thousand nine. So my point in all of this is I am asking to move some of that money from the probation officer position to the YSO to compensate her for this data entry. Because on the last part of this law, if you're not in compliance by October one of each year, it's on the last page, the administrative office of the courts shall file a report of the non-compliance with the juvenile court judge, which would be me. This is the part I'm concerned about. And the chair of the judiciary committee of the senate and the civil justice committee of the House of Representatives. So what I'm asking, um, respectfully asking the commission to do is allow, not spending any extra money, move, move, move money from the probation officer position over to the YSO and compensator. I'm asking for one point seven basis, uh, or one point, between one point five, one point seven basis to compensate her for that. I als, there's also in the juvenile budget, an attendant spot, which is a part-time position. It's a zero right now. There's nothing in it. There was prior to COVID, we haven't used that part-time position to, um, and then move the rest of the money, whatever's left over. Um, if you all were to approve it, to hire a part-time person to answer the phone and, um, handle things while she's doing that data entry. That's what I'm asking. So we stay in compliance and don't get reported to Nashville under this new law. So, um, so the, it would be, um, uh, and I'm just looking, I had drafted just a blank, um, budget amendment here. Um, so the assistant, um, spot would be moving, some of the assistant amounts, which is one oh three in the juvenile budget, would be moving over to one twelve in the YSO. And then the rest, whatever was left over, would move into the attendant spot, which is one sixty-four to pay a part-time person. Um, so, um, and if I, if, if you all were to approve this and the full-time person became part-time, that gets rid of county insurance. So that actually would save the county if, uh, that person was asking for county insurance up to seventeen thousand dollars a year. So really, it's no extra money and it's cutting money out of the general fund and saving the county money. And I can be assured that it's gonna be entered correctly because the YSO has been entering it for the last few months after the probation officer quit and left and had to fix it. And I know it's been right because I get a report from Nashville every month and it's right and it's entered correctly. So, um, I'm trying to be proactive about this and not get reported to Nashville. October first is coming up. I know it's right this year, but I don't, and again, the YSO's been here since two thousand nine. She's sixty-three years old. She's getting ready to retire. I have to be able to hire somebody that knows juvenile, what an adjudication is, what a judicial diversion is. And, um, a person that just has a high school, they've got to have experience or a college degree. And that is actually required for this position is experience in juvenile or a associate's degree is required for the YSO. She has the experience and she actually almost has an associate's degree. She's very close to an associate's degree. So she, and the biggest thing to me is she's been here since two thousand nine. She knows this stuff backwards and forwards. And when she does retire, I have to be able to, you know, hire somebody to fulfill that because I don't see this law going away. I mean, they're, they're, they're very serious about it and this is everything. If y'all want to know everything that has to be entered, I've started on there on that second page. It's everything that has to be entered and they have to know what that is. Every single case, and I handle hundreds of cases a month, and every single case has to have all that on there or we are recorded. So do y'all have any questions for me? I know I talked really fast and I'm throwing a lot of stuff at you. So how much, how much is in your budget that's not used for whichever, did you say the assistant line? Yeah, the assistant line, which is the, um, one oh three. It's, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five and change. Um, let me see if I. Twenty-five thousand? Yeah, twenty-five and change. And it's not used. That's a full-time. Yes, it's not been used for several months. It was used a couple of months ago, but it's not been used for several months. She left and it was not right and the YSO has since fixed it. And I have those reports to, to prove it. And, um, oh, and the YSO is also getting training on Quest. She had to miss court last week because they had a all afternoon training on Quest. Quest is the juvenile program that's required by the law. So she's getting constant, um, um, updates and trainings. I mean, it was live from Nashville. They're, they're very serious about this. There's a lot of trainings she has to attend. So, yes, do you all have any other questions?
Now, you will not have one position filled.
I'm sorry, could you?
You'll have, you will not have one position filled. The lady that left that position will not be filled.
It would be moved into the part-time, whatever, part-time position, whatever's left over. I'm asking for a one point seven or if y'all were not comfortable, one point five basis. And whatever's left over would be moved into that attendant spot. Pay a part-time person. Yes, you fill in and answer the phones. Yes, you fill in and answer the phones. So no money's been given away, except for the insurance, because I'm giving away, I'm asking to give away a full-time position with St. Saucy County, if they had a family, seventeen thousand dollars in insurance. But the basis at the bottom for what's coming out of the general fund does not change. It's moving a line item within a budget that you all have already approved. So that's, that's what I'm respectfully requesting, to avoid this in Nashville.
What's the point of increase?
So if you go to 1.5, John, that's gonna bring it up to forty-four thousand eighty-five dollars and some change.
How much, how much increase is that?
So it's nine thousand eighty-five dollars, which your grant is ninety?
Ninety-five hundred.
Five hundred.
It gets, it comes in two, two installments from Nashville every six months.
Which I know right now, they're, we're already using some of that.
Yes, and it's already factored in, yes.
Technically, technically, that would pay for the increase, and she would be at her normal county salary, if you look at it that way.
Yeah, there's some.
If you bump her up to 1.5. If you go to 1.7, you're looking, I'm just using round, I'm not gonna go into, you're looking at forty-nine, nine. So, that's, I'm just throwing those numbers so you guys know what you're looking at.
Thirteen thousand additional.
But really, that would be total, yes, but really not because of the ninety-five hundred dollar grant that comes from Nashville.
But now that's already in the 1.2.
It is.
So when you add anything to that, that grant's already wide.
Okay, yes.
If you make twenty thousand.
But she didn't get the ninety-five hundred, then she'd just be her normal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But yeah, you can look at it several different ways. But yes, I see what you're saying, Commissioner, yes.
Her salary now includes that ninety-five hundred.
Correct.
It's already, so that's the non-issue.
Okay, yes.
So the increase of 0.3% or 0.5% would be all of you.
Yes.
Taking up to 1.5 or 1.7.
So I guess that's what, what, what do you guys think? Do you have any, I mean, do you have any issues?
We could go with a 1.5 now, and then, you know, as time goes on, maybe. I think what you're trying to do is get out in front of this lady who's doing it now, retiring, so you can hire a skilled person.
Absolutely, and I think it saves, like you said, it saves hiring a full-time employee, because this person's already full-time.
Yeah, and I say the county, if the person, if I hired a probation officer coming in, they have a family, y'all have to pay seventeen thousand dollars a year, so you for sure would not have to pay that, like you're cutting a full-time position. So I'm actually saving the county.
How many hours a week is the current job required?
Forty hours.
So are they gonna work additional hours now?
Well, additional hours, no. It would still be the, it would still be the forty hours, but this position requires them to be on call 24/7, three hundred sixty-five, sixty-five days a year. So she was there today in the office. If there is a juvenile that is arrested by Sheriff Ross's deputies tonight, she's gotta come in, sit with that juvenile. And if that juvenile has to go to the Bradley County Detention Facility, she's gotta ride with that juvenile to the detention facility at 3:00 in the morning and transport that juvenile to the detention facility. And so again, when I talk about expertise and knowing, and she also has to make the call, you know, if the juvenile is suicidal, she gets a lot of those calls. She's gotta get that juvenile down to the hospital and get them in treatment at 3:00 in the morning. So yes, she is working forty hours a week, but she might not be in the office the next morning if she's been out the night before, and she just takes that as time not in the office, when she has to be out. And she keeps track. She has all those records, if y'all ever wanna see it, like when she's out, she puts it on her time sheets, which juvenile. And again, that's why she has to be very skilled, because she can't come to me and say, what do I do in that? Because that case is coming in my court. So she's gotta be very self-contained. So when you talk about a very skilled person, she has to, this person, when she retires, I have to hire somebody very skilled, because if they talk to me, that's an ex parte communication about a case in my court, and they can't do that, so.
So she's gonna take on that extra workload. And this part-time will kinda help offset that with the.
To answer the phone.
The clerical part of what she already does too.
And that's why it's needed, yes, thank you.
With the, and she is one that does sign her own time sheets.
She has to.
She has to sign her own time sheets.
I can't, I can't supervise, I can't certify that it's right, because it's a case in my court. And if she talks to me, I can't supervise her, because it's a case coming to my court. That's a violation of rules of judicial conduct, to know what's coming to my court before it happens. It's an ex parte communication.
Now, with the hires and the way she works, and I know it's been questioned on some things. Of course, her time call is a comp time, which is 1.5 scale, just like overtime would be, when she gets called out. Since she signs her own, if we do this, if we look at maybe a time clock, in that way, the certification's not questioned whatsoever.
Are you gonna have a time clock for everybody?
Just, just, just employees that sign their own time sheet. We've had this issue before.
I don't know. I think that's a discussion that we can have. I think it hinders this at the moment, though.
Well, not if we include this part of it.
I mean, all that takes is a handbook policy committee meeting, and there's more things we need to discuss pertaining to other things anyway.
I don't know if that's a handbook policy, if you've got.
Well, it's gonna go with time sheets, we're gonna have to talk about it.
If y'all are gonna, if anyone wants to sign their own time sheets, see, there's no word in policy that says you can sign your own time sheet.
Well, no, but there's a lot of other counties too, where the directors don't even do their time sheets.
Can I just take on this? Yeah. If she, if she's called out, it's in our cat. It's already logged in, so that's, there's gonna be a record. If there's ever any question, we can go back to the cat and say, yes, she was, or she wasn't. Now, the full time, I don't know that she's gonna call and say, I'm finished, I don't know about that. But we can make that rule a safe.
Well, I was just saying, I don't have issues with time clocks, so don't get me confused. I'm just saying, we can't, how many people sign their own time sheets too? So we're gonna implement a time clock system for two people.
Who's the library director?
So, I mean, I think there's probably other ways we can go about that. Like I said, I was, when I was a director in the other county, I never even had to do a time sheet, because it was how it was resolutioned.
So, as long as a lawyer, I wanna caution, taking on one or two, when you don't get everybody else, I'm just.
I've got to say, I wanna do it.
I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm just saying, you know, I, I'm always looking, I'm always trying to protect the county against lawsuits. I'm always trying, trying to do that. That's something I'm trying to be careful about. And I know you're not, your intention, I totally get what you're saying.
I think it's just because of signing the wrong time sheet.
Sure.
I mean, I get it.
Sure, no, I get it.
I understand, that is, if you have a specific situation like that.
Absolutely.
It's only this specific condition.
Well, and going back, we could also have other people come back on the reverse of that and say, why do they get to, and I don't, you know?
Well, it's the director thing.
Yeah, but, you know, so, I'm not, I'm just not a fan of somebody signing the wrong time sheet. I don't care if it's me, you, who, I just don't care. But I know this is a touchy, it's a hard situation, you know? But it's, I just don't want somebody not to be answering to someone.
Oh, I totally get it. I totally see what you're saying. And I would love, I would love to do it, but I can't. You see where I'm going with that? I'm being completely transparent.
Well, would, would the jail administrator, or Sheriff Ross, or anybody fall into that category? If we, if that come to that, being able to sign off on?
No, because she does have to be independent. The statute says a YSO, the youth service officer, they have to be independent of the sheriff's office. There's, there's a reason that they.
If she's going out and saying, I'm going to this location, it's coming in on the cat.
Yeah, that's correct.
It's on her time sheet too. It's on her time sheet, y'all can match it to the cases if you need it to. And it's actually on, she keeps a Google Calendar with the juveniles' names, because she can't put it on the time sheet, because you have to keep juvenile stuff private. But it's actually, if y'all wanted to ever see her Google Calendar, she keeps it with the amount of time that she's, she's out. It's, and I, you know, that is something I implement. I don't think she did that before Judge Bellows and I implemented that when I took over. For this very reason, I want y'all's mind to be at ease, so there's no question. So she's been, she has a Google Calendar separately, and I have told her, and she, she has said, if any of y'all wanted to see it, you could see it. So it does exist and has existed since I've been judge.
I think, I mean, if it eases everybody's mind, I mean, she can turn, turn in a log, a copy of something, whether something with her time sheet.
Okay, well, she does. She puts on the comments when she's called out on the juvenile, she's gonna put their name.
Right, we have no name, but just a log.
But you all could, as elected officials, could go in privately, but she can't file it, because that's public records, and you have to be careful, juvenile files are sealed. So, but I'm just saying, a private Google Calendar, y'all can all see if you have any questions. So yeah, it is on her time sheet, additional comments down on the time sheet, when she's called out, yes.
Do you guys wanna entertain something? 1.5, or what's your thoughts?
I was asking what it'd be at 1.5. She had mentioned, Judge had mentioned 1.5 and 1.7 during her initial presentation. I was trying to figure out the amounts, the increase would be at 1.5 and 1.7. So you're actually talking about an increase of 0.3 and 0.5.
Yeah, so if you take it up to 1.5, it's gonna bring her salary to forty-four, which is roughly about nine thousand eighty-five dollars difference from what she's getting paid now. So then you can take that forty-nine, nine, sixty-three, sixty-eight. I'm sorry, guys. So you're roughly looking at fifteen, fourteen, fourteen, nine, give or take, increase, if you do 1.7. So thoughts? I'm just throwing it out there for y'all.
I understand, Brooke can say it, and you've done a good job explaining it. My question, if they're working forty hours a week now, they're still gonna be working forty hours a week?
Yeah, that doesn't change.
But that part-time person's doing the job she would've been doing on forty hours, so she can do the data. That's why I'm asking for the part-time person.
Well, Shinjin is a part-time person.
Yeah, that part-time person, you know, is gonna be filling in while she's doing the high, the high, the intellectual stuff, the stuff that you need to know what these terminology, this terminology is. So that's where the part-time person comes in, while she's doing this new job.
And the qualifications for this job, the three years' experience, or that's definitely the state, right?
Yes.
For the bonus, you're talking about for the bonus.
It has to be for the YSO, and they have to have, they have to have twenty hours a year of continuing legal education credits. And then she's doing about ten, ten hours a year, about thirty hours a year with the Quest, the new juvenile training, and then what she has to keep for being a youth service officer, right?
I'd say enter 2.5 for now.
Making a motion for 1.5?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, 1.5, and then we'll take photos and see where it is.
Thank you all, and thank you for your time. Regardless of how you vote, I really appreciate it. Did y'all have any more questions for me, before you vote?
We're not asking for additional money, just move money.
Moving money, yeah. And saving y'all money, because I return the seventeen thousand with insurance, yes. Yes, any other, any other questions? All right, thank you all very much for your time.
Get more to schedule.
Keith Parker? Greg Bruce? Danny Carver? Debbie Davis? Mush Davis? Chrissy Harden? Kelly Morgan? John Pippen? And Samantha Tavon?
Next is a library board appointment.
I was unaware that there was an appointment for the library board. There was a application turned in, but I was unaware, if you remember, I did not read that off last month. So I would like to at least be able to keep that tradition going that I have, and announce this month that there is a library board appointment. Anybody that'd like to submit, please submit, and I'll bring that back before the law takes.
October, June, please. It's got a long agenda, from October till September.
Just reprint this one.
Yeah, this one will stand, I'll leave this one, but I was unaware, and so with being unaware, not giving everybody at least an opportunity.
All right, we'll continue that October meeting. Next is resolution discharge surplus process, scan the deck of action.
This is for the lead cabinet that's in the break room, as well as a desk that's laying out.
Well, that'd get oxygen air to come for this.
No, we'll just need some strong back here.
Can we just say they have to pick it up?
Like I said, there's no, there's no codes to it, I don't know how to even get into it, but it's getting ready to find its way out of here, if you all allow me to get rid of it. So this'll be resolution 911, is that correct? 9125, I'm sorry. Whereas the following listed properties has fulfilled its intended usage and longevity and service for the county of Polk, and its continued usage has become suspect as the expected outcome. With such properties being included as following on page one. Now, for their beer dissolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session on the 18th day of September 2025 pursuant to TCA codes 5-1-14-1080, 1 and 2, and any other law of the state of Tennessee. County Executive is hereby authorized to sell, or dispossess of, in any part of the home the following property, which is hereby deemed to be unusable and/or dispossessed by Polk County Commission. With such being made at any legal sale or discharge qualified under the Chapter 5 Tennessee Code and any other applicable law of the allowance of the state of Tennessee for dispersment, surplus, damaged, or unusable property. This resolution shall take effect from the passage in the public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve 9125.
Agreed.
Any discussion on resales of 9125?
Can we really add that they must pick it up themselves? They have to remove themselves?
Well, if we're gonna just give you that, we'll just give you that.
Roll call.
Keith Parker? Greg Bruce? Danny Carver? Debbie Davis? Mush Davis? Chrissy Jordan? Kelly Morgan? John Pippen? Samantha Tavon?
Next is a three-star update, and executive action.
So I think most everybody is aware that earlier this year, our three-star program came back to our IED board. Monica's here, she's one that's on the board, Ryan Cook is also here with the board. Is there any others that I'm not recognizing with the IED board? And Glenn comes off the meeting, so Glenn has a part in it too. But, so, we have just received this award, I'll read off what it's for, but anyway, there's gonna be two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars in a grant that is for the welding program. This will benefit each and every one of our kids going forward. But there's fourteen miller welders, fourteen wire feeds, one iron work, two welding tables, fourteen welding exhaust booths, welding booths with exhaust, two pedestal grinders, two down-drive cutting tables, four oxygen settling tanks, four carts, one Watts pipe cutter, and all this came in at a grand total cost of two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars. This will be part of our commitment, we're helping with the schools through our TCAT. So I'd just like to give the IED board that adieu, as to what they done. I know they put Monica over in charge of that. If you ask Monica, she's gonna tell you it's because of all the letters and different ones that's worked and done. This is part of a community coming together to seek a betterment for our children. And I'm extremely grateful to see that amount of money come into this county and be used for good use. Not everybody's intended to go to college, but everybody needs to get up every morning and go to work. That was one of my grandfather's most favorite quotes. And so this will help those kids to learn a trade and be valuable within our community. So, congratulations on that, and whenever that all comes up, of course, I'll let you all know, but just wanted to let you know that update for our three-star. Do you have anything else?
I wanna thank all of you guys. I know you all signed onto a letter for us. It was the letters we were, we had over thirty signatures on our letters, and over twenty letters. I think it's the most that have ever come out of Polk County. Ten seats at each school. If they start as a freshman, they will receive their certificate in welding by the time they graduate. So they will be able to go out to that trade. This is, trade is our focus right now for our three-star grants. Um, but really, Commissioner Pippen, you wrote an extra letter for us. County Executive Hatcher, you sought down Congressman Fleishman, Dan Howell, Tom Hatcher. Samantha, you corralled everybody to get them to sign on to the county commission. Our, um, two school officials, Dr. Goodman and Dr. Jones signed on. TCAT came in big for us. Glenn's never gonna take any credit, but he was actually able to get TVA to not only sign a letter, but also commit, um, potentially adding on to the program with supplies, cause I know that there's additional things that come in. TCAT also said with thirty percent, we are, with the, um, ability to have thirty percent of the funds that come in through them, we should be able to hopefully pay for our teachers. So, hopefully we will not need school budget funding for that. I will need help, of course, on both sides identifying people that can teach, but they have, through our governor, um, Bill Lee, they have changed some of the requirements to that. So, if somebody has been in the trade for X amount of time, they should be able to teach that subject matter. So, um, and, and you can be part-time in doing so, so it doesn't have to be a full-time position. The goal was to keep the costs low for the county, cause I know the county is counting every penny, which I think you've got also, um, but we wanted to make sure that we got this done. And any other suggestions, our meetings are open to the public, um, please come. Um, anybody else who is looking for any other grants, I'm digging into them. Poor Robbie knows that I'm filing them left and right. The worst they can say is no, the best thing they can say is yes. We are one of only, um, thirty-five counties that received a grant. Um, I'm pretty sure ours is for one of the most and we also, good news, good news, found out today, we have been certified again for three-star. There's actually a county that was not certified for this. So, we were able to put in all the requirements reorganized and I would like to say a special thank you to County Executive Hatcher and all of our mayors, sorry if I'm long-winded, but we actually had, our interlocal agreement had not been updated since two thousand, so we were in need of updating that and we were actually able to get all of that done so we could recertify and be able to apply for money. There's no match to this, so again, trying to save costs for the county. Um, there will be a grant writing fee, but we're gonna work on seeing what we can do about that very minimal, only five percent, um, and I'm, I'm gonna try and work that out. So, if you have any questions, let me know or any other grants that you want us to pursue or go after, um, please, I'm available, all of you guys should know how to get ahold of me. But really thank you all for all of that, that without your support and help, that would've never come through, so. Yeah, the equipment goes to both schools, it's, it's, both sides of the county are benefiting from this. I try to, I, I'm, I know you're not supposed to split the baby, but I'm splitting the baby, I'm not getting involved in that, so.
We split everything.
I want, I want everyone to be happy if I can. I'm, um, I would love to get Benton, Benton enrolled in our, um, our, um, market, uh, what is it? One of the other grant programs that we have, um, for businesses to be able to help with their facades and get them enrolled in that if possible, but we'll have a meeting here in the next couple of weeks where we'll go through everything, but cannot thank you enough and all the people that participated in it really helped out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just here to write things.
Well, it's gotta be written around, don't you?
We've never not got signed on the three-star grant, so can't knock the people before either. But good job.
Next is, uh, also County Executive Hatcher, building grants.
Took care of that with the, with the, as far as I know, I don't think we had anything else. I think it just happened.
We got an RFP for the block.
Got quite a few of them, so, uh, first one, I need you all to reject the bids on the bulletproof vests. Send that back out again, so that was, I was handed off, so they're wanting to rerun them, but since those bids are out open, that would need to be rejected before we can submit those.
I'd like a motion to reject the bulletproof vest bids. My understanding is the sheriff's office has decided that there's a better level for the RFPs, is that correct?
Yes.
We need to restate it. So, it has been restated on one of the grounds that there is a, a different level. Need by sheriff's office to want the bid. So, that's the reason for the rejection.
Got a motion, Madonna, take a muster, reject the bid. Any more discussion, Rokeau.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
Next would be the eighteen bids that came in. Uh, one was King Development Group for one hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars and the other was Quality Fence, um, for the total project cost including operators and access control of eighty-nine seven. I seen that was the one that paid ninety dollars on there. There was another that was a total cost that has outlined in the bid and then they added a commercial operator and access control to the gate for a total of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. And that's grant money. This is the cost of the county. King was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and Quality was eighty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars.
Do you have a preference?
We do and it came into the lowest bid.
The lowest one?
Quality Fence, we've been out, been out there placing a couple of times and they, they really seem to know what they're.
Make a motion to approve Quality.
Exactly.
Make a motion for Quality.
Yeah, I second. Kelly, second.
Any discussion on event three? Rokeau.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
Tom Pippen?
Yes.
The other one, RFP that was done that day was for the compactor at South Polk. For some reason, I can't find any one bid to, if somebody has it. Fleet Genius was twenty-three thousand one seventy-three eighty. Notice in Fleet Genius, I have spoken with them, they did charge a tax that had to come off if they already reported that. The other one, the other company, no, let's just. K-Pac, go get this, K-Pac, sorry. K-Pac came in at sixteen thousand seven forty-nine. I don't know the K-Pac equipment, I do know the Fleet Genius equipment. That is the equipment that we currently have and operate. So, my recommendation for the board would be for the three yard from Fleet Genius.
What was the price of it?
Twenty-three thousand one seventy-three eighty.
What was the price of the other company?
The other company is sixteen thousand seven forty-nine. And that is with delivery, we will do the install ourselves with either one of those, those of you all that was on the commission whenever we first took that over. I'd say the entire, for us, the safe of the install is one of the biggest wastes of money that we never won. It's very simple.
And I'll say too, the Fleet Genius bid's higher, but it's equipment we already have and I think it'd be wise to go with them, that way we could, in a sense, rob parts off other units that we interchange. This other unit, K-Pac, it will not.
You can't interchange?
No.
No, it's totally different.
Now, there is.
Seven thousand dollars worth of this.
Well, I believe there is.
I can't answer that question, but in the sense of, uh, you know, longevity and keeping things running, I always think it's better to have one brand, one type and that way, you know, we could have parts for one unit where we'd have to have parts for two. For two or three, however many different, kinda like, you know, for a Chevy, you can't take a part off Ford and put it on Chevy.
And Ben sitting here, he'll tell you, when we get a packer go down on a Saturday, it's awful nice to be able to phone up and deal with the company that we've dealt with. In about thirty minutes, we've usually got a, got a solution. So, not only do they give their warranty, but the man that builds and does, I've got to know him very well and so he is extremely, if y'all knew all the time that there was issues at the dump, you'd go crazy. Just not what you see on little papers, but there are legitimate issues that happen and always happens on a weekend, so.
What is the warranty? It just says a standard warranty, but what is it?
It's, uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's a two-year parts, uh, one year later. Two-year parts is what it's on there, if I'm not mistaken. There's one bid here for a five yard, you didn't, you didn't. Correct. The, the biggest difference with the five yard, you get a little more length, uh, but dealing with what we're dealing with there at South Polk where you're coming in and out, I don't really think that a five yard, three yards, the same one that's at Benton, those are big. It will be just like those that are at the Benton side. They don't have a, have the anti-standard loading on the sides, so it's, it's the board. And their only bread thing is, is that is about a nine-week turnaround, um, because they build these as they get their orders in, so based off of availability of metal, but as soon as they know they will get started on it, which everyone hasn't been on so few.
Fleet Genius, their recommendation is the three yard. Make a motion for the Fleet Genius three yard recommendation. So, awesome job, thanks for much, any more discussion?
So, we're taking Fleet Genius with the twenty-three thousand one seventy?
Yes, the three yard.
Eighty, okay.
Rokeau.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
Tom Pippen?
Yes.
Matt Pippen?
Yes.
I just wanna include on that, that's Dylan, who, one day discussed, it was the high bid, however, it was the best bid of the two.
Post a clarifying on all the bids. I had a, had a ding that went on the agenda, but we'll have to also play with October, it's, uh, for the fire halls and old Ford, Grease Creek.
Oh, my goodness.
I guess working on that very good. Eric, did you talk to him?
No, I, I've not spoken. Well, I did speak with Eric, Eric said that he has not been asked about the matter, so if you all are okay with it, what it is is because of the lack of support, uh, lack of funds at these two, uh, stations, they are wanting to turn them over from being community controlled back to the county, especially with what it would cost, the ISO ratings to go up for those people that live in that community. I don't know exactly how bad these fire halls are or who wants to get, it's gonna be needed. If I'm not mistaken, Greasey Creek needs a roof and I'm hoping to think Old Ford is kinda the same way in my run on that grid, Old Ford needs.
Hey, Chris, yeah, I know what you're talking about, Old Ford.
It's needed?
It's needed.
Okay.
What, a roof?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty old, we haven't been using it for, for some time, so.
So, we'll play black by October.
As long as you all are willing for me to seek out that endeavor, I'll get Eric over.
One question, Greg. Uh, I'd like to regenerate, uh, last month or month before, whatever, we had talked about getting the, some of these roofs inspected. I think whilst Steve is here, uh, he can give us a little input on maybe issue or two that he's got going on. And I just, you know, I want us to try to get something rolling with whatever we've got here that's got an issue before it turns into mold and we got bigger issues and, you know, so, uh, do you, what do you feel like, Robbie, that will be our best bet to try to get someone to come out? I know, I know everybody don't come out for nothing, sometimes they charge and then if they get the bid, they'll take it back off and if not, we may owe them, you know?
I know whenever the last repair was done at the Justice Center, I had to go back and look, but I remember whenever it was done, that David Paris with Rackley Roofing had spoken to me about it as well as he'd spoken about the courthouse roof. I believe they're the ones that done it back years ago. Ben was on the roof of the courthouse not too, too long ago. It's not in dire shape, but it is starting to get where it's starting to pull late. So, I would say that there are some preventative maintenance that could be done here, um, which I know this building more so than the Justice Center, but I do know that whenever that was done, that it was looked at and I'm hoping that Rackley had gave some suggestions for the Justice Center as well. I could go back, look at it and see it, contact them and see if they.
Because we'll have to have a precise something to put RFPs out, out with it, okay.
And Rackley, so if.
But now you have got leaks going on right now, Steve, correct? Okay.
And we, Robbie, how long ago was that, did that guy come out? Two, three years ago, was whenever the awning got blew off. Uh, is whenever the judge's, uh, court was flooded, flooded out, so however long that was.
And didn't you say, Brooklyn, that you had a leak in the courtroom?
It's still there.
Okay. So, it's got, yeah.
We shut down downtown law court and it was falling on me and then we get back down there and then the whole wall flooded like three years ago. And then just like two, like a month ago, that we had a bunch of rain and the tiles.
Well, I mean, we're, we're gonna have this, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to address this.
So, high rows and everything, yeah.
We, we had talked to the company, I don't know, maybe the same one that County Executive's talking about, that will come out and assess for fifteen hundred dollars and if they do get the bid, then fifteen hundred dollars goes toward the bid. I don't know, it's really, I don't know any, my gentleman friend's been checking on it. We've got several issues with our roof, it's not just our place, it's back in my detective's office and even in the.
Right.
Second area.
Well, we'll let, we'll get Robbie to see what his people are says about charging us for a bid or not charging us or whatever and then, uh, not bid, but assessment. And then, of course, once, once we get everything assessed, then, of course, the bids go out. But, you know, our, and it may be to where we get back with you on your guy. I mean, I don't care who does.
I don't either.
Yeah, I just, we just, yeah, we need an assessment, right? Yeah.
I'd actually just message David while you were saying that.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, that, that's fine and like I say, we're just, we just wanna get, get it out, you know, we just start the ball rolling, cause nothing's not vice with these people.
What kind of updates on the fifth and third row and Forest Service?
The only update that I have came to me this morning over the second.
The last time Philip emailed me, he said, they're getting me to start all new rock, too.
He's, he's looking, I can give you one.
Go ahead, we need to be sure to find the dump truck names this time, too.
About one o'clock, one o'clock, two trucks went out, one behind the other. I don't know the names on them, cause they went pretty fast and I was going the other way. And at three-thirty, my wife came in, five trucks went out in a convoy.
Yeah, they're already started.
Three-thirty, three-thirty in the afternoon and she didn't get the names off of them. They had white cabs and she assumed they were all the same contractor, but she didn't have an identification on them. That was today. But there's been an increase in the last couple of days on dump truck traffic on the road. That's all I can say.
What's our good name this week?
I think I was here in May about that and not a damn thing's been done.
No, it's, well, it's supposed to be, Philip is supposed to be in kinda with, with Forest Service, lawyers, Philip, Roy Jean, it's supposed to kinda be in a circle right now.
It is in a circle, Dave, that's right.
And it's a circle and I think it's circled back and like, nobody wants to do anything, exactly. But, but we also have got Chandler, Logan, they are looking into this, correct? Greg, wasn't that the way it was left the last time?
Yeah, I'm on it, uh, I'm, I agree with Danny. Yeah, I'm on it. I'm, I agree with Danny, and y'all too, it's a big circle.
Yeah.
At the October meeting, I'm gonna try to get everybody involved there, the Forest Service, Roy Jean, you know, get everybody in one room. And, uh, we'll.
And we may just, yeah.
See where it's at.
I think Mr. Logan, with the highest respect for his ability, told me that apparently once Forest Service became aware that a lawyer was involved. Then they said they had to go to a higher level in their.
Yeah, you're right. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, well, I've, I've had matters with them down in their regional office in Atlanta over my career, and if we have to go down there, then go down there. I think they're big, they're like General Motors, they never run out of money and they never die.
Basically. We can get one of them to be the next one, too. We'll get everybody we can there. Lot more effective to get everybody in one room than waiting to move.
Well.
But what might work, what might work is fifteen, twenty people. In the community, fifteen or twenty people in the community lay down on the road where it runs into the Forest Service road and not let trucks go by.
Yeah. Well, Greg lays down, they're not going over. Let's put it that way.
Steve says no, couldn't we not lay there?
Civil, civil discipline. Not, not by, not by. Why do people like me run over you? Excuse me, Sheriff, you know what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I've got, I've got another issue.
Okay.
The other issue is Shane Bowman. I live in the second district. I paid my taxes to date for my corporation. When I was in there, I paid them. And I thought driving home, I got home and my wife said, are you going to the county commission meeting tonight? I said, is it tonight? She said, yes. And Greg, he told me this weekend it was tonight. So I've asked Jackie, it's been forty-one meetings, regular and adjourned, since the election in twenty-twenty-two. Starting September of twenty-twenty-three, and forty-two meetings, counting this one. Mr. Bowman, who I've had conversations with, who I like, and I do not conflate personalities with business or politics. He has missed twenty-two meetings and he has attended nineteen. He has missed every meeting this entire year. Didn't participate in the budget, doesn't participate in deliberations, does not represent the people in the district I live in, cause he's never here. I don't care what the reasons are, they could be, that, they could be personal. I know when he first got elected, he told me he had a night job in Chattanooga that was important. And he arranged to come at the regular meetings, but adjourned meetings, he didn't think he'd be able to come. But his attendance has left us with half the representation we should have. Greg is all we have in the second district, representing us on the legislature. Now, I don't think any of you raised this issue before, cause I don't come to every meeting. But I want you to explore, either ask him for his resignation, or declare the seat vacant and do something to fill it. Because the condition for our people is intolerable, unacceptable, and we're not going to be subjugated to the rest of the county for fifty percent of the representation we're supposed to have. There is no excuse for what has happened. It needs to be rectified right now. Thank you.
Mr. Mobbs, you are an attorney, are you not?
Yes, I am.
All right. Have you researched what you just said?
No.
Okay, well, you should.
Oh, yes, I have. I asked.
Okay, now listen, no. You should have, because this come up as an issue with the commissioner several years ago. They missed several times.
Yeah.
And it was checked. It was checked by C-TAS, it was checked by state election commission. The commission can ask him for resignation, but it can't do a dang thing.
Okay, and that's.
You cannot, you cannot withhold a commissioner once they're elected. You have to beat them to next election.
Okay.
Which you should know, cause you've been the county, you was county attorney for years.
I was the county attorney for twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I was.
Cause you know better than what you just said, and what you've just done is take a slap at somebody who has had some health issues that's not allowing to be here and should be sorry.
Whatever the issue was, I know he's not been here. And I suggest that you ask for, ask for his resignation.
That was absolute sorry slap. It's, it's just like when you resigned for this commission that time and then decided to stay on. You resigned, you told us you were done when Mike Stinnett came in. Hoyt Firestone left. You met with us that day, you said you appreciated working here, this and that, but you were gonna make your leave, you just wanted to do things with your wife and family. And then you decided to stay and then you got mad assed because we hired you.
I never got mad.
Oh, yeah, you did. You made your statements. You made plenty of them. So what you done right there was take a slap shot at Shane Bowman. And I don't think there's anybody in the room, no shame, knows you didn't just do that.
Well, I, I, I've met him, he spent with my house, I talked to him when he got elected. I have the highest regard for him. This had nothing to do with personnel.
None. Had nothing to do with the law, you just put it to him. What, ask him to resign or do what?
What, ask him?
Ask him to resign or do what?
Well, clear to C-TAS.
We can't do that.
Well.
And you are an attorney.
I'm an attorney. And you want to know why I resigned, Mr. Bishop? You broadened up my resolution.
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you why I resigned.
Yep.
I was the county attorney for twenty-five years. I tried to top the company's chemical complex case for a week every April over in Nashville against the best law firms. When they wanted their appraisal drop from two-hundred million dollars down to thirty-two million, I'm the one went over there and tried it every year. You know why I left?
What?
When Mike did it and you and Bishop and a couple of other commissioners, when that election took place, the financial agents for the county came and said, you're on a variable interest rate on this twenty-five million dollar debt you got. We think that interest rates are gonna change, they're gonna go up, and we can get you on a fixed rate that's real low. The county went ahead and changed the variable interest rate to that interest rate. I was never even told about it. The documents cost the county people four hundred thousand dollars plus for fees for the banks and the lawyers. And there was a provision put in the new bond issue that if it was redeemed in ten years, there would be a penalty that would cost five hundred thousand dollars dearly. Which, when Hoyt Firestone got back in office, ten years later, he redeemed that bond issue, but he had to wait that long in order to save the five hundred thousand dollars. The extra interest that the county people paid for that time period was probably close to three and a half to four million dollars. That's why I resigned. I resigned, I resigned because the county commission, Mr. Bishop said I was culturally, culturally unacceptable to the people of Pope County. And I said, no, no client should have a lawyer they don't like. I will resign. And no lawyer should have a client he doesn't want to represent anymore, and I don't want to represent the county anymore, and I'm out of that.
You know, I voted no on that challenge.
I don't care what you say, I know what they did. All I know is the county, the county attorney was never even asked to look at the documents when they read finance, twenty-five million dollars worth of debt.
Marty wants to say so. No, he says something else.
Does he go bail first?
No.
Newspapers here, I'm gonna ask if he's tied residence, did they put something in their newspaper, did they do a story?
Yeah.
And did contact Robbie if they would like to help run this.
And, and my thoughts was is that there's a good group, there's an organization that really likes that. They can, they can work, cause we'll work with her, be in my direction.
You're the county attorney, just go ahead.
Just start. Just start talking.
We'll listen. Hi, guys.
Hey, I just wanted to bring up, I'd like to try to bring it up next meeting, I think we have Detective Hatcher. Uh, the fire department, we just had pump tests done on four of our fire engines, one of them the new ones we got from City of Cleveland. Three of the four unfortunately failed the test. Uh, we do have, um, uh, at least one company, there's not a lot of places that does pump work. And so we have to go out and find, this particular company's in Alabama, there's another one that I think comes out of North Carolina. But, uh, people that can come in and fix their valves. Long story short, they won't pull a draft because the valves aren't closing quite all the way, they won't pull a draft. If the fire engine doesn't pull a draft, it can't be rated under ISO. So I just wanted to give the, uh, uh, commission heads up, uh, that we will be coming forward in October. Unfortunately, we just got this notice this week, or we would've tried to get it on the agenda, cause I think we are gonna have to ask for a one-time additional money to get them repaired. But we just didn't get it, and so it's gonna have to push it back a month.
Do you know roughly how much that is?
It's, um, we have nine thousand, it looks like the bill's gonna be about twenty-five, so it's gonna be the difference between the two. And that will get all of the engines working to pass those pump tests. So just wanted to let you know. I've got information, I'll be happy to show you the apparatus, uh, if anybody wants to discuss it offline. See what's working, what's not working, why they don't pull a draft. And usually, it's pretty much the valves are old, they're not seating all the way, so when you go to pull a draft, you're sucking air. And if you suck air, you can't pass the pump test. So if you can't pass the pump test, it's not a ISO certified fire engine. So it's just a challenge. Unfortunately, the Cleveland engine's one of them failed. And, uh, it just passed one a year or two, but it failed, but, you know, sometimes it's just what's happening with the valve. So wanted to let you know about that, and, um, I'll be, be happy to work with any of you and then, of course, come in and speak to you and let you know what's going on with that.
Okay, I got something for you. Have you got anybody that can inspect those valves? You may have trash in them.
Well, and that's part of it. Uh, what we've got is we've got some people that'll try to look at it, and we're trying to do that, but we can't discover it. And like one of them, it's ninety-five percent closure. It's almost closing, it's just not that last five percent, and so it's pulling a, it's breaking the suction.
Ben, you got any ideas on history on valves?
I worked with valves on, uh, dry stack sprinkler systems. Which are similar, but I've never worked on an actual truck before. But I can learn anything.
YouTube.
YouTube will teach you anything.
Mr. Parker? I have, I have a friend that is the number two in the Cat County Fire Department. I can ping him and see if they can have some help with that.
Right, we, any, any help we see, yeah.
I'm happy to.
We, we've never turned down a handout yet, so, uh, anybody that can help.
He also writes federal grants for them, so if you ever need somebody to help with that.
And for the record, guys, I was just doing my job today whenever I was asked for this.
You don't have Shane Bowman.
So before this gets back to Shane, I worked on the bus, I did my job. I was doing my job.
We don't got a motion and vote, we just wait and see.
Motion to adjourn and the.
Right, and it.
Ms. Rogers' computer just come in today, and so hopefully she'll have her attention.